And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Good morning. We're here today to present a check to Central Maine C A T V from Modern Woodman of America for $2,500. We recently conducted a joint fundraiser through the talent show that was put on by Central Maine C A T V. And through generous donors to the station and Modern Woodman's match, we raised over $5,000. Thank you to everyone and thanks to Modern Woodman for contributing to this activity.
Thank you very much, Patrick. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick.
And the money raised is going to go to purchase some equipment for the station in a variety of ways. So we certainly appreciate all that Modern Woodman has done for the station.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is public announcements. Nomination papers are due on September 22nd for the November municipal election. There will be one seat for the town council, two seats for the school board, and one seat for the Kennebec Water District. Number two, non-essential town services will be closed on Monday, September 4th in observance of Labor Day holiday. Our second order of business is public hearings, which we have none. Our third order of business is public comments. Members of the public may speak to the council on any item or reserve the right to speak on a specific item that is not on the meeting agenda when the item is addressed.
Stand up.
Moving on to our fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees. Our town manager's report.
So I have to make up for lost time having not been here the last meeting. So earlier this month, I met with the potential buyers for the Escalon Drive property, Escalon Road property, sorry. We discussed the TIP amendment procedures and what would be required for information should they be looking for a credit enhancement agreement and how they would go forward with that. Also, I have put them in touch with Garvin Donigan at the Central Maine Growth Council, who are also working with them on some other potential financial investment pieces, so for job creation and that sort of stuff, pine tree zones, sort of things, so.
Good.
And then the New England Managers Institute was a great training opportunity this year, which is where I was at when I missed your last meeting. Majority of our topics were around internship possibilities and how we are to encourage young people to join local government professions. Other topics included union negotiations and the legal challenges of changing workforce, such as dealing with marijuana in the workforce, now when it becomes illegal, those sorts of things. Also, I met with Goodwill Hinkley's president, Ken Colville, to discuss potential land parcels to include in the TIP amendment. The Senior Appreciation Day last Friday was a big success despite the rain. We do believe that the weather did keep a few folks away, but they had a tarp over the chicken barbecue, so all was good. The police department's phone server has been replaced and their phones have been put back in service. However, we are continuing to have phone issues throughout all departments. They are intermittent, but they are causing a problem. We have everybody working on this from OTT Communications, Omnia Technologies, Spectrum, our IT department, absolutely anybody and everybody is working on this problem to try to isolate it. It's, they're down to the point now where they're thinking it may possibly be a wiring issue. Our phone service works and our internet all comes into the police department and then disperses to all departments. And it may be the direct wiring that we have between here and the town office. We're not really sure. But we're still working on it. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the groundbreaking ceremony at the Kennebec Mansory School. The school received two community facilities direct loans totaling $938,000 to help with constructing a 3,500-square-foot addition, which will be two new classrooms, an art studio, teacher's prep room, and additional storage. This will allow them also to offer programs for children up through age 12 and increase their enrollment to 130 students. So I'll get that tomorrow. Some updates on some of our projects. This year's section of the road reconstruction on the Ridge Road is complete and Pike has installed the base layer of pavement. The Martin Stream Road has been reclaimed. They're currently working on completing culvert installations and repairing the road's surface. There may be a possibility, maybe a possibility of paving that stretch this year depending on budget constraints and Mother Nature. This year's tax bills have been mailed. They were, most of them were delivered yesterday.
I got it today. I owe $2.63.
And then the floors of the town office have been scheduled for their refinishing. The process will take place in two stages. The front counter and assessing co-enforcement officers offices will be done September 22nd through September 24th. We only anticipate interruption of services during this section of the building, which would be that Friday afternoon on the 22nd and potentially Monday morning on September 25th, just so that we continue to move furniture out and move furniture back in. The other end of the building will be done September 29th through August, October 1st. And that's it.
Thank you. Committee reports? Anything from any committee?
Michelle, where I wasn't at the meeting Monday, could you talk about?
Sure. So the Economic Community Development Committee met this Monday instead of last Monday. We pushed it forward due to some folks who weren't able to attend. Your minutes from when you discussed, the Economic Community Development Committee was presented to the group. We discussed various different pieces. Basically, the folks that were there have determined that the Economic Community Development Committee will exist as it currently is, with their monthly meetings being more of an overview of things that are going on, and that when they have individual projects, they will set up smaller subcommittees to work on those specific projects. They liked that idea. They will be working on goals, potentially three different goals, to come back to council so to see which ones council would like them to move forward with and endorse and for them to work on. We spent a considerable amount of time, Garvin and I did, on updating them on our current economic development projects, such as the TIP amendment and potentials for solar and various different groups that we're working with to get things done. And that portion of the meeting basically related to the kinds of things that they wanted to do during their actual meeting when they met, and then know that they would just get updates on ongoing projects and that sort of stuff. So it looks like they're on the right track and they're not looking to go away, which nobody wanted to do, and I think they've developed a path which they'll be able to continue going for.
Now, I would like to add, though, that you had asked me a question a couple of meetings ago about some of the, you know, where was the misdirection coming from or potential conflict? So the answer that I've gotten is the both directions. There's been a lack of engagement and there's also been a feeling of miscommunication. So, I mean, hopes that what's come out of Monday's meeting will provide some clear direction and clearer communication paths to overcome those hurdles. Because I, you know, it's a chicken and egg situation, right? Which one caused which? And my personal feeling is that the communication gap has created the situation, the interest level on individuals' parts, but with, you know, specific direction, then that should be helped greatly.
Well, I'm glad that there's a path to help it and it's my hope that this council can be communicative in a way that will help bridge that gap.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, moving on to our fifth order of business. Two, waive the reading of and accept the minutes as printed or amended for meeting number 16-17, held on August 9th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Pass. Our sixth order of business would be budget report and treasurer's warrant, which we have none. Not today. Today, we're saving money. Our seventh order of business is take action on the following items of business. Item number 17-77. Order that the town council hereby authorizes a police chief to sign and enter into a mutual aid agreement on behalf of the town of Fairfield with various state, county, and local municipal law enforcement agencies in accordance with M S R A Title 30-A subsection 2674, aid to other law enforcement agencies. Go move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just, I think just a note on this is that this is for the four communities, Winslow, Fairfield, well, Winslow, Fairfield, Oakland, and Waterville.
No Benton.
Benton's a different, they don't have their own police force.
This is, it was brought to light because of a new agreement.
Right.
Those four. This is something that the council actually had voted on, I believe, back in 1994.
Couple of years ago, yeah.
But the motion that was done back in 1994 isn't actually in context and in keeping with the way the law is right now.
But what I was gonna, right.
This is just a housekeeping issue.
But it is, you know, if the other police department needs some help or something. Now, if it is a dire emergency situation where you have people at risk, that type of thing, you don't need this agreement. It's an automatic, they can jump in and help. This agreement is more of a non-emergency type basis. See, we need, you know, an extra car up here for this, or, you know.
There'll still be people that'll question it anyway.
Could be an accident or whatever.
If it's voted on, then it's good.
Well, yes?
It may also include the town's district as well.
Thank you.
And other towns as needed.
Stay out of my head, thank you.
The town of what?
Skowhegan.
Skowhegan.
I'm assuming the sheriff's departments and state.
That's why it's just a county.
And sheriff and also, yes. That's on the emergency basis.
It was that four-town agreement that brought it to life, but it was written so that it could cover other possibilities, including scampering and other agencies.
So it came up because of that, but it's not limiting to that.
Exactly. It gives him the opportunity to.
Yeah, and it's a vice versa, too. They can come in and help us.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes. Moving on to our eighth order of business, council workshop and other business. Number one, to discuss proposed local food ordinance. Well, take it away.
So we were provided with a number of ordinances and documentation on this. I personally thought that all these ordinances looked really good. One thing that I would like to see in our ordinance that I didn't notice particularly in the ones that we were presented with is, because I don't want to give people the impression that we have the power to nullify federal law, which some of those ordinances definitely veered in that direction, basically saying we're declaring federal law illegal. We can't do that. I would like our ordinance to be very clear that we are doing this to the extent permissible under state law and that somebody who takes advantage of our sort of statement of enforcement priority on this is aware that there are still, you know, potential federal regulations that are not affected by the state's grant of home rules of the town, and it is their responsibility to ensure their compliance with those regulations and to, so we don't give the impression that we are, I certainly don't want to tell them that something is legal if it is not by declaring that a federal statute or a regulation doesn't exist. It certainly does, and I think that would be an important thing to address. Otherwise, I thought that the existing ordinances, particularly the sample ordinance that was in there, looked really good. And I would, I'd like to see if we can get something along that line drafted with some language to just disclaim that we are not attempting to circumvent federal law in the process. We are only extending our authority to what the state statute says that we can.
So it was interesting. I did put out to the managers' list serve regarding this topic and the information that you received was actually very, almost identical to the exact information we received a year ago. So not a lot of folks have made movement on this. However, I did receive some feedback from the Auburn city manager, who currently has a draft before his council, and as soon as it was passed and finalized, they were going to send us a copy of that as well. So they are a couple of steps ahead of us. The town of Jay is also working on this. I had spoken with their town manager as well. So we'll hopefully, with all of the combination of all of these, be able to get exactly what we're looking for. So for the next meeting, I just, we were hoping to get some follow-up today with what you had read, if there were, exactly like Aaron said, things that were missing that we, nobody had thought of, to make sure we got there.
Is there any other discussion on this particular topic?
Nope.
Moving on, Economic and Community Development Committee. I think we've already, I think we've already got that one covered. Number three, discuss proposed amendment to the Teague Route 201 TIP district.
We had discussed in the past about the retention of this district, how much of this finance plan would actually stay within the municipality, would go to the town's general fund. Currently, this TIP district does, it's currently written, 100% of it goes to the TIP development program and none of it goes to the town's general fund. We, this amendment is proposing to add approximately 366 new acres, substantial amount of land. However, it's all land that is currently tax exempt anyway.
As you say, it's all.
So what's interesting with this is that it's huge amounts of new acreage, but it doesn't change any of, the total projected shelter on this, unless it's developed, is 100, I mean, 1.2 million dollars, which is actually slightly less than when the original TIP was put in, as of right now. Because the town had projected a 5% growth in the Teague district from the time that this was implemented in 2004, and that actually did not happen.
Right.
So this is actually going to be less money than what it originally started at. The only pieces that are being added are the two town-owned lots and the KBCC lots within the Teague district, which is on Escalon Drive, which are currently tax exempt. There are the Towns Farm, which is approximately 133 acres, which is located off Route 201. The 27-acre parcel that we did the tree clearing on this past winter, that piece, so should we decide to sell that, we would have the ability to help some folks. A small portion of the south campus of Goodwill Hinkley, they're currently working with a developer to potentially take over one of their buildings to turn it into student housing, and that would be a private for-profit entity that would be running that facility. And then the north campus of Goodwill Hinkley, and there are two parcels that are across the street, one's between Route 201 and the railroad tracks and the other's between the railroad tracks and the river. All of those parcels up there, that portion of their campus, they are looking at using and for commercial development, yes, that piece right there.
They got nice little houses up there.
They do.
They do, but they're in desperate need of repair, consequently, the dollars and cents.
They got good bones.
Yeah, but the consequence for the dollars and cents with KBCC, we just can't afford to fix them up.
No, but somebody can eventually.
But the dorm is very important for the college because for any type of expansion, getting out of state people, things like that, into the college, which we need.
Absolutely.
We have to have dorms.
Yeah, no, they've got good bones. I mean, you know, if they can fix them up, I mean, you know. I drive by them, I like the looks of them. I said, I wouldn't mind living in one of those, you know.
So the life of this district would stay the same. It is set to expire in, what is it, 2035? So there's roughly about 18 years left in this district. So we're just within that window to be able to offer someone a credit enhancement agreement. And based upon our current plan, now is the opportunity to change that. Right now, in order to do a credit enhancement agreement, if the max life is 15 years, if they do a credit enhancement agreement, anyone who does one, regardless whether it's one year or 15 years, our current existing policy is that the business has to stay in place within the community for at least five years. And there's a very large application process with all of this. But currently, we do shelter 100% of the tax value.
Yep.
And right now, if any of these parcels, we have no tax value on any of them.
Not get anything, at least we get the TIP money into the.
So I've added to, most of what you'll find in here, in the document that I sent you, is simply the addition of the new parcels, what that detailed information is on each parcel. There are still some questions that have come up, and as soon as the assessor comes back from vacation, I'll be discussing those with her. But there were two additions to the program in this. Most of this was our projects for this TIP district, sewer improvements, sewer replacement fund, signing and road improvements, economic development, including credit enhancement agreements, and TIP implementation costs. I have added property acquisition, rehabilitation, and demolition. And then revolving loan, grant investment programs to assist businesses with energy costs, conversions, conservation, and general business assistance. They'll pay for program management or business incentives. No money would of course be used for residential property, which is in conflict with TIP. But they have not been assigned a value yet, simply because of the fact that until the assessor returns, we don't know the exact value of this addition as well.
Well, and the other thing is too, if I understand it right, if that, if the KBCC deal goes through, which will create a good amount of jobs, it also will pay that bond off that the town has so that we're, you know, off the hook for that bond that we're holding also.
The town currently holds a mortgage on that, which is the bond for that location. So yes, that is true. So it's a lot. This is pretty much what I've done the entire, all of last week and most of this week, has been invested in this. I've made a couple of calls to D E C D and had some conversations with them. My next conversation with them that I'm looking for some feedback on is to see whether or not we can do, TIP development districts can have out-of-district costs. So I'm waiting to find out whether or not we can use the Oakland Road property in this, where we would be looking to turn the Oakland Road property into a parking lot. So it's, a parking lot for local businesses is considered economic development, but it's not within this district. And that is a project that we currently don't have any funds for. So would we be able to use those funds for that? So that's a question I have up to them.
For economic, it's for economic development, that's what the TIP is for.
It might just be, you know, concerned how far it is.
However, this, this gets to, I think, one of the major problems of placing all-new value in TIPS is that they are geographically limited and we have projects that we need to address outside of these TIP districts. And the more and more that we TIP, the less we have available to deal with things that exist outside those districts. We can deal with downtown and we can deal with, you know, the Teague area and the industrial road and whatnot because they're within the boundaries of these TIPS. But by locking up those funds, it means that we are going to struggle to make ends meet when it comes to projects that do not qualify for TIP. And there is, there is that downside to moving these funds out of the general fund and locking them up into special projects. And most, and like you said, you know, the benefit to residential properties is essentially completely disallowed by TIP districting. So eventually, we get to the point where we are, you know, we're greatly improving the business community through these TIPS, and that's great, but eventually, we need to improve the residential community and.
Unfortunately, though, those, the properties we're talking about right now aren't paying taxes anyway, so we're not moving anything out of general fund.
That is true, but this is not the first TIP that we've created and it's not the first time that we have.
Obviously, but there's nothing we can do about past events.
Right, but I think in terms of creating TIPS in the future, I don't personally believe that the only path to business development is to create increasing numbers of TIP districts to give corporate welfare through credit enhancement agreements. That's not how it used to be. It doesn't have to be that way. And ultimately, if what we're saying is we're going to lock up all of the economic development into TIP districts that can only service the business community, then at some point, we are not benefiting our residents by attracting these businesses anymore.
It's like we did with the gas pipeline. We did, that's been, it's in a TIP district, but we did a 50-15, 50% in 15 years.
Yep.
So we allowed 50% of that to go into the general fund to help with local taxes with, for the, for residential.
But my understanding of this TIP agreement, it seems pretty clear, there's no intention of putting that money into the general fund the way this agreement is written.
That's just simply the way it's written right now. That is part of the discussion we needed to have tonight because that's exactly how it was written.
Right.
So that's why that section is highlighted, because we had had that conversation about possibly doing that and whether you wanted to take, so these are your options. You can either amend this TIP so it's, you can put any portion of it towards the TIP district or towards the general fund. So do you want to say that, because there are no current credit enhancement agreements regarding this district at all. You're not going to affect anybody that's currently out there and will be dealing with Hinkley. You can even, you could say that, okay, all of the original districts stay the 100%, but these new districts are 50-50, or they're 75-25, or 60-40. All of that is completely on the table as to how you want to handle that. Because we're doing an amendment, you can amend anything. So what you got was just what we already had. That was my biggest point for tonight's conversation, is how we go forward in that direction, what is the council's pleasure for that?
I guess my view on it would be that we should presume that the vast majority, if not all of the funds, would go into the general fund unless there's a compelling reason to do otherwise.
I think some portion of that should be maintained into the TIP so that our value, was it state valuation, is that's affecting our revenue sharing.
It affects revenue sharing.
That affects the revenue sharing and school.
Educational subsidies.
Educational subsidies.
And county taxes.
If I recall correctly, the, you said last time that the net impact of that was approximately, was it $1,200? Is it something to that range or is it very small?
It's very small based upon the way it currently is.
Currently is.
However, what's impossible to predict is that what is currently assessed at zero could potentially be assessed at 3 million. So that's where we get into our issues. That's the portion of this that I really need to sit down with the assessor with and make sure that we've got our numbers correctly. That was unfortunate about that this evening for your discussion, and I even talked to Michael today, that I wish I had all of that together for you. But until she returns and we can go over that individually, I can't, I can't predict that yet. But just as an example, okay, so the Escalon Drive property, right now is completely tax exempt. Once purchased by a private individual, it's 1.8 million dollars that will instantly hit the tax rolls. For value, okay, so that attributes to about 24. Okay, so that attributes to about $24,000 in property taxes. In about two years' time, that will catch up to us and will affect what happens with the school funding. But we don't have the exact calculations right now. So this TIF district itself originally said it created about a shift of. What was interesting in this though, just talking about revenue sharing, the projections for this TIF and what the revenue sharing would be and what revenue sharing actually is is was funny for when this created, it was a little interesting. So the current tax shifts was 891,631 from state education, 181,217 from municipal revenue sharing and 295,498 for county tax. Those numbers on my preliminary calculations are not changing very much. But we also need to look at how do we project that because we instantly know the way that these work is you have to go based on what you know for value. Well, if I know that instantly our valuation is going to change by 2 million dollars, shouldn't I at least look at what that number is for that calculation? So that's part of the DECD conversations that we're having, so.
So who are you waiting to come back and talk to you if I understood that you said you're waiting?
So our tax assessor is currently on vacation. She went on vacation the minute the tax commitment was done. She's out for two weeks.
So why could we not table this until a later time? Is this something that we need to have done tonight to vote on or is it something that you need?
No, this is just work. This is a workshop. This is strictly workshop and we can continue this workshop for the next meeting.
So what will ultimately end up happening is that you will have a you have to have a public hearing that has to be posted and then vote to approve. So when the town charter changed, it left the ability for town council to now approve this as opposed to when years passed where it had to go to town meeting. So the folks that are currently in the process of waiting on this evidently have within their purchase and sales is contingent on a successful negotiation with the town. So that's why we were trying to expedite this process as quickly as possible. But that's not a reason to be hasty about it.
But we can't because she's not here for two weeks.
Well, she's back next week, so. Last time your next meeting rolls around, we'll have these answers.
What and how many jobs is this going to?
So this business right now that we're currently talking about and what brought this up at this moment in time is 50 jobs that would be coming to Fairfield and my meeting with them said within the next one to two years would be 80 to 90 jobs.
Oh, that's good.
So and they're good jobs.
And it's and it's, you know, bringing in people, but it also possibly sets up situations of house buying, building, whatever too.
And spending.
I mean, it's a create and spending.
On certain things.
It's an economic creativity, so it's not all tax, it's about the jobs.
Of those jobs that they're bringing to Fairfield, those are already existing jobs.
I believe a good portion of the 50 are already existing jobs in a different community.
We're talking 30 additional jobs then.
And to me, that gets to another concern with with creating a novel package tax infrastructure for this. This is an organization that is taking 50 jobs out of another community because they found a possibility of preferential treatment here. And it is entirely possible that another community is going to underbid us at some point and those 50 jobs will go there when they do. And I think when we're talking about revenue sharing and sheltering value and whatnot, we don't know what revenue sharing is going to be in two years and if anything, the last several years have taught us, we don't know if there's going to be revenue sharing every two years. And when we're talking about sheltering value and making permanent agreements or 15-year agreements with companies that are apparently willing to relocate their their businesses when when profit dictates it and that's capitalism and all for it. But when we're talking about that environment, to me, it seems that we are increasingly being called, we are on our own to fund our necessary expenses. We don't know if and if at all and then to what extent the state is going to kick in to help us. And the the TIF shell game to protect value in hope that we'll get more money later is not a bet we are guaranteed to win. And I think that I'm not saying I'm not going to ultimately favor doing this. I will see the numbers and we'll see how it goes. But I I really want people who have been following this TIF issue and have been following our economic development to know, just because we create a TIF does not mean that we are guaranteeing a good outcome from that. And in fact, there have been projects that have completely failed despite having preferential tax treatment.
No matter what you do, there's no guarantees.
Eventually, you're going to have to pay the piper on your TIF. They will run out and eventually you will end up.
Get the taxes.
You will get.
But there's no guarantees.
And your revenue sharing will decline.
For anything.
Your cost of education is going to go up for property taxes.
Right, but if a company is spending X amount of dollars to put that in, they're not going to two years say, oh, see you later.
No, I agree with that. You know, I don't have a problem with that.
Just like when everybody was looking, when all the municipalities did the gas pipeline TIF, so that was a huge shock to everybody's values and what that was going to do and what that was going to create. But anybody who did a 30-year TIF with 100% sheltering was going to be looking at the same exact issue in 30 years as they were looking at the very day it was constructed. So what is happening right now in the real estate world though for us is that, you know, the the I in TIF does stand for incentives and municipalities that are offering incentives are the ones that are seeing growth. Municipalities that are not are not seeing growth. You know, and nobody wants to take jobs from another town or that kind of stuff. They were here looking at a facility long before they knew that it was a possibility because of course, remember, this section is not even in the TIF district. But it did, we were approached with it and asked whether or not it was something we would be interested in doing and we started down that path to see how that goes. They have been given no indication that they're even even if this passes, they guarantee to even get a credit enhancement agreement because you know just slightly less than what I know about this company because they are not until these deals get to the point where you're sitting at the table, you don't have anything on them. I do know that they're a nationwide company. They do have offices in other states around the country, so they are not limited to Fairfield. They're limited to.
And they're not a fly-by-night.
The entire country. I mean, they they can go anywhere. So they do have a backing. That doesn't mean the next person that comes down the road does. And that doesn't mean that if you put all of this stuff into a TIF district, that you give a credit enhancement agreement to anybody. So it's one of those pieces where but you it's good to know that you have the availability and the option should you want to, which is the biggest reason why I had added that section that was more like the revolving loan fund. The town used to have a very active revolving loan fund.
Yes, we did.
And helped a lot of businesses coming to the community and that went away quite some time ago. But that piece of it, because again, this TIF district also doesn't have very many years left and it will be over anyway. So but that's where you're at. But that was my biggest thing, Erin, was to find out when we complete this document as to what does that capturing look like? How many years do we want to do? Do we want to take all of it? Do we not only do we want to take half of the new value? What do you think is a good option for this area that we're talking about? And it's an extreme amount of land. I was shocked when I finished adding it all up at 366 acres.
Yeah, that is a lot of.
It's an extreme amount of area.
But it's also all vacant.
We had talked about doing a completely separate TIF and it's been discussed with me by the folks at Goodwood at Goodwill Hinckley for the last almost two years that I've been here for their area because there is absolutely no incentives for economic development up in that region at all, other than the pine tree zone, which means you have to bring in jobs, they have to be new jobs, they can't be jobs from anywhere else in the state domain and those sorts of things. And there's specific jobs, agricultural finance, that sort of stuff. That's pretty much it.
And and that's a tough place because it's the distance from the interstate and right like that.
So but that's where we're at. So I mean, you could decide tonight that you don't, you know, I gave you what I thought would be good for areas that we've talked about, but we can take any of these out too. It's all on the table and this is locked in the structure.
I'd like to wait till she comes back so that we can hear some more stuff of her input.
Well, you're going to end up, we have to wait till she comes back so I can give the rest of the information.
We don't have a choice.
Because I mean, you know, it's not enough information to really go forward with it. I mean, until she comes back, so.
Will this be on council workshop at our next meeting to finalize the discussions on this?
Yeah, that'll be a good idea.
Very good.
No, we don't vote or so moved or second or what or do we?
No, no.
Nope, it's just just workshop.
Okay, good enough.
All right, number four, other council business. Beverly.
I did notice that up on the green road, Chief Wu brought up the little box there that was monitoring the speeds up there because we had quite a few complaints from some of my constituents that are up in that community, which I'm part of, which I'm glad to see. No more further from DOT, I assume, from 139.
No, we should have actually received a report by them.
Or from Weston Avenue either, right? We have to kind of get after him, aren't we?
It's the state, they move at one speed.
Slow.
Yes, well, actually two. And if you don't like that one, you'll hate the other one.
I told them, I said, I've got two more, two at least two more, well, yeah, two more years. I said, so, you know, I'm just not going to go away, just so you know. So I I'll be asking at every meeting, so that's that's my pet peeve.
Anything else, Mary?
No.
Jeffrey.
That time of year, my my son packing up to go back to college was a reminder that we have residents all over the town that are moving away to college over the past few days and up the next coming week, so just want to wish them all well and a good, safe year and forward progress with them.
Very good, thank you. Erin.
I would just add to that for, you know, people who are going back to school in any grade, I think they'll probably be starting before we have our next meeting, so good luck to them as well.
Yeah, good luck.
John.
No, just other than that we're starting, I know the kids have already gotten their letters and telling them who their teachers are and everything like that, so it's.
When do they go back? Is it after Labor Day? Used to be.
Yeah, it's coming up real quick.
No, it's before Labor Day.
It's before Labor Day.
It is.
Yeah, they used to go back after Labor Day. That was a long time.
I recall last year, the year before, it was a three days before Labor Day and then Labor Day vacation and.
Yeah, they did like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday and then Friday off.
Seems to be.
Yeah, pal football and.
Seems to be shorter and shorter every year, really.
I don't think I've seen the calendar in the office, but I'm sure it must be on their website, on the school's website right now.
It's an exciting time of the year for those folks.
Yeah, so is fall. I love fall.
Did that all went all summer.
Just the only thing I have is a quick question on how is the removal going down in Industrial Road? Is it in progress?
So the roof is being dismantled and some of the pieces on the top, it appears to be slow going, but going.
But going.
It appears because because that gets where the kids practice, pal football, going past. It looked like Sunday, they had people up there working, there hasn't been anybody up there since.
So I was up at the garage today and there was somebody there today.
There was because.
Are they supposed to be out by August 31st?
I didn't go up there today, so I don't know.
Yeah, so there was somebody there today.
But I know Monday and Tuesday, there was nobody up there.
So August 31st is supposed to be out, right? Or is it September 1st?
August 31st is the last name.
So.
All right, with that, the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, September 13th, 2017. And do we do we have anything that we need to sign this evening?
As a matter of fact, I do not have anything, so Erin counts the minutes, but otherwise we're all set. No recess needed.
No recess required, so with that.
No executive session.
You said September 13th?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Yeah, me, second.
A motion or second, this meeting is adjourned.